Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's city council meeting. Please stand. We'll be led in a prayer and pledge by our newest member, Reguero.
Choose, please bow your head. Dear Lord, we would ask at this time today that you will please bless everyone that's in attendance and those that are watching, bless everyone, period. We ask that you keep us safe in this time of this pandemic in our country and help us to use common sense. In your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Well, I'll say good afternoon again, but and because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. There's not many public members here, but just for your, for your, for the sake of everyone, that's important to remind them. Also, I wish to ask everyone present to please silence all electronic devices if you have not done so. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Forbes and Councilmember Bench are excused. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer is absent. Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Balls.
Here.
Councilmember Ostache.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have six members and two absent, three absent.
Okay, do we have any announcements, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I want to make everyone aware that Consent Agenda Item Number 12 has been added, and it's to accept an award of $25,000 for the city's 2020 Census Awareness Campaign.
All right.
And also, everyone, beginning tomorrow, Tuesday, March 17th, the City of Saginaw is closing all city facilities to the public, and it's an abundance of caution for the coronavirus. This includes City Hall and the Public Works Building. The closings are effective until Monday, April 6th. Citizens are advised to use online options, the pay-by-phone, or the payment drop box located in the back parking lot of City Hall. Or you can visit our website, www.saginaw-mi.com, for information regarding payment options. Residents requiring immediate attention, call 989-399-1311, and then get options to select a department to speak directly with a department representative for assistance. At this time, all city-managed public meetings and events are canceled. City's council's next regular meeting is April 6th at 6:30 PM. And next, we have a proclamation declaring March 31st, 2020 as Sezard Chavez Day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Guevara, would you step forward, please, so we can make the presentation? Good afternoon. This is the City of Saginaw proclamation as follows. Whereas Cesar Chavez, the most important Latino leader in U.S. history, was born March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, to Librado and Juana Chavez. And whereas young Cesar and his family moved to California following seasonal work after losing both their farm and store in 1937 as depression intensified and years of drought forced thousands off the land. And whereas Cesar Chavez toiled as a migrant farm worker alongside men, women, and children who performed daily backbreaking labor for meager pay and in deplorable conditions. Cesar Chavez devoted his life to correcting these injustices and to remind us that every job has dignity, every life has value, and every person should have the chance to get ahead. And whereas Cesar Chavez, an American labor leader, co-founded the National Farm Workers' Association, also known as the UFW. Cesar Chavez became the best-known Latino-American civil rights activist and was strongly promoted by the American Labor Movement. Chavez led his demonstrations with nonviolence and was instrumental in defending and protecting the rights for farm workers. And whereas the values that Cesar Chavez strove to live out in all his endeavors include service to others, sacrifice, a preference to help the most needy, determination, nonviolence, tolerance, respect for life, celebrating community, knowledge, and innovation. And whereas 2020 marks the 17th year of the American GI Forum of Saginaw, a veterans' organization celebrating and honoring Cesar Chavez, since 2003, the American GI Forum has upheld his legacy of service, conviction, and principled leadership that serves as an inspiration for all Americans. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, as Cesar Chavez Day in the City of Saginaw, and call upon the citizens of this community to reflect on and honor the life of this distinguished leader, veteran, and American. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed the 16th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2020. Sign myself, Floyd Clark as Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostache, Autumn Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II, as well as Timothy Morales, City Manager. Please step forward, and it's my honor to present this proclamation on behalf of the American GI Forum. We appreciate, we appreciate the gesture.
Thank you.
It's a new, it's a new paradigm, but bumping elbows works. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I will. Again, first of all, thank you very much to the City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, to the Clerk, friends and neighbors of Saginaw. Again, we are celebrating 17 years, first of all, not only to recognize Cesar Chavez, but also those 17 years we've been having a luncheon, which provides scholarships for our Latino students here in the Saginaw area. I have to say that we received a notice from the CDC stating that we either cancel or postpone any event that has 50 or more individuals. Our event does have over 50 participants, so therefore, we are going to postpone March 27th, which is a date for our luncheon, till further notice. According to the memo we received from CDC, they said up to eight weeks. So we'll see what happens after eight weeks, but we will continue after eight weeks to have this luncheon. Those that participated either through ads, sponsorships, ticket sales, we will continue to honor those when we do resume our luncheon. So if you do have a ticket or if you are a sponsor, please be aware that our booklet will include your name, except the dates will change. Other than that, on the behalf of the American GI Forum, men and women, we want to thank again the City Council for this proclamation, and thank you for the work you do in the City of Saginaw.
Thank you, Mr. Guevara.
Madam Clerk. Your next order of business is public hearings.
And we have one today, is that right?
Yes.
All right. The purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name and your position on the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Public hearings are not a question-and-answer session. Therefore, questions must not be directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our public hearing this afternoon is regarding the Urban Cooperation Agreement with the City of Midland.
Is there any public comment to be had on this matter at this time? Chief, welcome.
Good morning, Council, Mayor Clark, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Manager. Just to introduce what the sub-recipient agreement actually is, it's a, the City of Midland has been elected to serve as fiduciary for Homeland Security Planning Board funds, and as fiduciary, they've requested a sub-recipient agreement with each local entity that is taking part in the grant program. So we brought similar agreement for the fiscal year 18 agreement for council last October, and this is for the fiscal year 19 grant cycle, which runs from September of 2019 through May of 2022. So it's a three-year program, and there are several grant years that are running at the same time, basically. The funds that we get from, you know, from this grant are for police and fire. For the fireside, we've gotten equipment, air monitors, hazmat suits, and so forth, and we've also gotten quite a bit of training reimbursements for overtime to allow personnel to be trained in hazardous materials and technical rescue, any specialties that have a nexus to homeland security, so.
All right, thank you, Chief Ambro. Are there any other public comments at this time? Are there any other public comments at this time? Last time, are there any other public comments at this time? Hearing none, we entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Support.
And support it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk.
We are now at public input.
And we do have a one, we do have one, is that correct?
Yes.
The public input for those who might be speaking, welcome to those who have signed up to address council today. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you'll be speaking slowly for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute time limit, which is timed by the Clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching, SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you.
My speaker today was Grant Garrett.
Mr. Garrett?
Inside the room.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Oh, you're on.
Excellent.
You just made it.
Good to meet you, Grant. Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
My name is Grant Garrett. 58, but the last 55 years, I've lived over in my neighborhood, northeast side Saginaw. I would like to have a cleanup, preferably the first weekend, morning, first weekend of April, which coincides with my birthday, so it kind of makes it a win-win for me. I've been talking to some of the originals, people that have been in my neighborhood for a while, and they said they're on for it. They want to do it, and I got a lot of the children that's like, well, they got three weeks now to do nothing, so they might as well help me too. So if I would like, if the council, if I could get some help, maybe from Waste Management, since they're right down the road, scenic, we can get this done. And I've been talking with them, they want to make it an annually thing, so that my weekend or the first weekend of April will coincide with the neighborhood cleanup. I would enjoy the council, if the city could help me anyway, I'd be most appreciative. And like I said, I just walked from downtown, so I'm a little, little wet, but I'm just glad I got here in time and just speak in front of you guys. And since the city's closing down tomorrow, I'm really glad I got here. So if I could get the help of the city, if they can give me anything, anything, resources, a rake, shovel, or dumpster, I'd be most appreciative. So I'm gonna get it done. It's my neighborhood, I love it, and I'm back. I've only been on the other side of town a couple of years, but other than the military air force, I've been in that neighborhood, and I love that neighborhood. I love the people, and I love the children, and I want to help them do what I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. It's a great idea. We will refer to the city manager as required. Hopefully, he will be able to give you some assistance. It is an unusual time in our society, but I love your ambition, and I think it's a great idea, so we'll see if there's something we can do.
All right.
Mr. Manager.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next order of business is remarks from council.
And today, we begin with, well, we would normally begin with Councilmember Bench, because she is not here. I do want to remind council of a three-minute limit, so we will start with Councilmember Williams. Guess what? Surprise!
All right, good afternoon. I would just like to put out there, really, as I said in a prayer, that we use common sense during this time of crisis in our, in our country. And going around to the stores, I've been out myself, making sure that I'm stocked up on things that I need to have, making sure that we're not taking more than we need, so that there are things left for others, and I hope that everyone would do the same thing. And I really hope that we're able to, our government's able to get this in order by, you know, the sixth or sooner. It would really be nice, so that's all.
All right. Councilmember Ostache.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, and just a quick comment to Mr. Garrett, if he's still here. Okay, he's not. Okay, I was gonna mention to him about the Spotted Snagat program that's running through the city, and I know they're ramping up already. I've been, I had an opportunity over the last two weeks to get together with Mary Ellen Johnson, and she runs the Youth Protection Council here in the City of Saginaw. And I was able to get a tour of the facilities with her, and it was really good to go over there and see where the block grant money is being used. So I want to thank Mary Ellen for their time and their staff for their time and for taking me on that tour, so, and look forward to coming back, and we're gonna get together soon. The other thing I want to mention, too, is the recycling program is back for the City of Saginaw, so please check our website, or the Waste Management website. It's pretty much kind of what we had before, and it's a lot of the rules on which you can and cannot recycle, so they've got a list of everything there for you, so I just want to mention that, because we have had some of our citizens here in the past that were trying to come up with some ideas in addressing council. So that's a good thing. Another thing I would like to mention is Alex Mixter, who is heading up the Lee Mansion Restoration. Alex will be recognized pretty soon by the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. This is a group that's down in like a not-for-profit area of the, of the state, and they're gonna be giving him the 2020 Citizens Award for his preservation efforts here in the City of Saginaw. So congratulations to my friend and to Alex Mixter for that much-deserved award coming your way. And then I did have an opportunity, I want to thank the Northwest Neighborhood Association. I was able to meet with them as well and stopped into one of their meetings, and so had a good conversation, and I look forward to coming back and speaking with you again as well. So that's all I have at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Garrett for coming here with that great idea. Probably be a good idea, maybe we can do a spring cleaning in the City of Saginaw, maybe, and have dumpsters maybe in different locations with the Neighborhood Association. I think that's an excellent idea. The CEO, the Wine and Gas Credit Union called me the other day over on Boxwood. I know you guys probably heard this before, but they do a lot of dumping over there periodically during the year, every year. And the other day, there was a dead dog out there, all type of furniture and stuff like that, and it gets to be terrible, and it's right in the area where the employees of the credit union drive on their way to work from all over the tri-city area, where they come to Wine and Gas Credit Union to be employed, and it really looks bad. So I don't know, maybe they put a camera up there or what. I did make a phone call to Mr. John Stempel's office, and they took care of it right away. Within the next day, it was all cleaned up, but periodically, like I said, it's always real dirty over there. So we probably need to think about maybe having a Neighborhood Association cleanup, where we bring in the big dumpsters to each Neighborhood Association, allow the neighbors to throw stuff in it. I noticed since we tore down a lot of houses, if you notice the, on the fence lines of all those houses, you have a lot of trees and weeds and stuff growing there, and the next thing you know, then the bags and trash and stuff end up going there, and it's really terrible looking, so maybe we oughta do something about that. So I'll probably be out there helping Mr. Garrett out, and anybody else in their neighborhoods clean up, I'd be more than happy to help out now, since I retired again. I'd be more than happy to help out, even though I do have another job coming up in April, but I will be helping out as much as possible. Other thing I wanted to mention was, I noticed that the, I can't, is it Isabella Bank that made a donation to the city? I'd like to let all the citizens know that we have, do have a good corporate partner within the city, Isabella Bank. I know Wine and Gas Credit Union do things like that, too, where we donate money to the neighborhoods to help fix up things, or donate money to the city, or to just everybody, commoners in the city. And all of us need to let, wherever we do business, let them know they can make donations to the city and help out, and I think it's really beautiful that they donate that money to the city to help out with the housing. So I'd like to thank them personally for doing that. And I wanted to mention to, to Mr. Guerrero about the Cesar Chavez Day. Every time I think about this guy, I think about him, E. Philip Randolph, and Martin Luther King. These guys got involved in civil rights because of labor situations. E. Philip Randolph with the porters that was on the trains, Mr. Chavez with the farmers, and Martin Luther King was in Memphis helping out the sanitary workers. And we know that labor has always been a problem in America, regardless of how they got people to be here for labor, but it's always been a problem, so we need to be cognizant of it all the time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Just want to mention one thing, with all the changes, emergency declarations from the governor and other areas, I know our city staff is going to be working with a lot of schedule changes with various partners of ours, events that may not go off as originally scheduled, and from the internal communications we get, they're handling this all very well. I just want to say, I think our staff is 100% on top of the incoming from the coronavirus pandemic, so I don't see much to mention about that, other than good work and keep it up.
Okay. Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you. It's a different time that we're living in now. We've got to adjust to a new normal for a little bit, so I just want to remind everyone, you know, the CDC's coming out with some important information. Make sure that you're following and taking proactive measures to help reduce the coronavirus spread. I currently work for the Saginaw County Business and Education Partnership, which is now known as the Partner Shift Network here in Saginaw, and we have over 100 families that are in need of childcare. With schools closing and not everybody has the ability to tell remotely work or work from home, we have children who need to be taken care of, so if you know anybody that has a childcare facility that has openings, or if you are willing to babysit, please contact me, because we do have working individuals that really depend on going to work but have to take care of their children. So please, if you know anybody, please reach out and let me know. We have to accommodate, and our community is only strong as long as we work together. Even though we have a changing world going on right now, we do have some important things going on right in our community, and that's the Animal Control Center. They are going to be making a decision tomorrow. So there are a lot of initiatives and a lot of people that are coming together, so please, if you have time, go online and fill out the survey, let council know, contact your Board of Commissioners. I know the meeting is close to the public, or that is what I've been told. You still have a way to, I know, you still have a way to get your voice heard, so the meeting is tomorrow, it's still planned, so make sure you take the time. It is important and vital for that to stay in our community, so I hope and I encourage all of council members, if you can, to attend that meeting tomorrow. Other than that, I just send my best wishes and prayers to everybody in the Saginaw community. Stay strong, we're gonna make it, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'd like to say greetings and thank you for tuning in and being here today. My week has been Washington, I'm so thankful that I can stay home for probably an indefinite period, and I'm glad about it. But one of the things that I, that I've learned in my last week and a half of traveling back and forth to Washington is this: We have to think smart. We cannot just run like we used to. If you notice, last night at 9:45, it came across my computer, restaurants were closing. We are matching or we are copying everything that everybody else is doing. Another thing I'd really like for every, to encourage everybody to do, if you know a senior citizen, please, check on them. The grocery stores, people have been not considerate to each other, because they're buying up by bulk, disinfect, paper towels, all sanitizer.
Everything.
When, when the scare started, people just started buying. One of the things that we, I'm concerned with is the elderly. What about their meals? What about their toilet tissue? So I know that there are organizations and groups that are working with it. I've talked to the Hispanic community, and the neighborhood house is still gonna offer to-go meals from 4:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. I've seen that the school district has extended their stuff Saturdays. I don't know what the soup kitchen is gonna do. We've got a bunch of groups that's getting together, so we can get some food banks going. And so, my fellow councilpeople, I'll be keeping you informed. Also, the conference that was scheduled in March, I did cancel it, as the president of the Municipal League in Lansing. We are going to be precautionary measures, because we had over 800-plus people, and people still trying to get in to the conference, and so we're gonna postpone it to a later date. When I get information, I know that the city manager probably say, Brenda, why you send me all of this? But when I get the information, I give it to him, and I also try to give it to someone at the courthouse, so that we are all on the same page. The other thing that I really want to stress is, is that I need people to understand and read themselves. The panic button is being pushed, because some people are not really familiar with what's going on. We need to have a universal statement that we're releasing, and if you're not sure, please, don't tell people, because we'll have this city in a rage. Right now, I think that everybody is taking precautionary measures like they need to do, but my favorite thing has been for the last two weeks, wash your hands.
Thank you. Today, some people, I want to say welcome everyone watching or here, but some people may wonder why we're meeting at noon today. This was originally to be the Student Government Day, which we're, we were gonna have all the local schools, high school students from all of them, attend today and have a whole number of activities in the morning, but that ended up being canceled because of all the schools' closings and the inability of those students to participate. So because we were scheduled anyway for this noon meeting, we continued. This is what we do every year, so to answer those persons' questions who may wonder, that's what's going on about right now. Mr. Guevara, thank you for being here. I want to thank the GI Forum for all they do. It's really important, and it is important for us to recognize the contributions of Mr. Chavez to the American Labor Movement, so we're honored to be able to give this proclamation today. Councilmember Scherzer, I thank you for raising the idea of the animal shelter. At this point, the county is still having, planning on having their meeting. Those of you who are interested, and I would hope it's everyone here in the city, would plan on attending that meeting. You need to sign up yet today, I think it's before 4:00, if I remember correctly, to speak. If you're intending to, it'd be very good if you would be on their agenda, so they know that you have an interest in speaking. This is an important topic to the city. So please, if you have, if you don't want to attend, you also can have your voice heard by contacting, as Councilmember Scherzer mentioned, your, your representatives, and don't be afraid to contact all the county commissioners. This is important. And next, as has been mentioned, this, these are unprecedented times, but it is important, as Mayor Pro Tem Moore indicated, that we do not panic. Don't hoard, respect those, the needs of others, when you do plan on preparing for the next several weeks. The CDC, federal government, city, county, state government are all doing everything we can to address this unprecedented situation. The, there, one thing I want to stress is, these, this is gonna be a very difficult time for many of the businesses in the city, particularly your restaurants. If you can, consider asking them if they will do takeouts. You can help You can help those businesses survive if they are able to continue providing the service. And if there are ways they can do that, one of them might be to use, provide takeout where they don't normally do that. It is something to consider. Don't be afraid to contact those businesses and inquire if that's possible. The more that you people do, the more likely they are to be able to survive. Last, we still have, in this time, the census coming up, and we've got to remember to be counted. Hopefully, everyone, if you're home, if you still do the census online, you're being sent it by mail, please respond. This is really critically important to our city. Please respond to the census. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are now at the report from the manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Just a few items. I don't know if it was mentioned, but the off-site meeting coming up March 26th, the citywide meeting, is canceled as well. Chief Ruth canceled it last week. The Senate bill that was introduced by Ken Horn and supported by Representative Vera passed both the House and the Senate, so I went to the governor's office last week, and that's the bill that allows us to have a special assessment for public safety in the city. So that is at the executive level now. And I believe the last mention, the meeting I mentioned, that we did receive a grant from Consumers Energy for the chargers, the slower chargers. We were notified that we received a grant from Consumers for fast chargers as well, for two chargers, so Yolanda and her team have been working on that. So they're currently looking at locations for these items to make sure we get them in place during the grant periods. So we'll probably have more information on that at upcoming meetings. I think the vendor might be here today scouting those locations to let us know what we need to have in place. And finally, neighborhood cleanups. The city's worked with a lot of neighborhood on these cleanups throughout the years. We typically don't have dumpsters there, but we have used city trucks to be placed there, so people could put the items in the city trucks to be hauled away. We've allowed special drop locations for yard bags and waste that can be picked up later. So those are all options that we've done many times, and we could continue. I'd encourage the neighborhood associations and those involved to talk to some of the hardware stores, they often will donate, are very low prices, provide yard waste bags and trash bags and things like that. So those are good things, and we've been doing them for a long time, so if that can be expanded, that would be a great thing, I think, for the city and the neighborhoods. With that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV, channel 191. Are there any exceptions of council to be noted by the clerk at this time? Any exceptions? Any exceptions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
A support? It's been moved as support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
We are now at boards, commission, and committee reports.
Are there any reports of city boards and commission? Councilmember Ostas.
I do have one today, Mayor. Thank you. We had, we met for the first time this year, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we had a couple of variances that we were able to approve for the Mary Freebit project.
Thank you. Any others? Any other boards and commission? Okay. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
We are at resolutions. Our first one is certifying the 2020 single lots assessment tax rule.
Can we have a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Support? The move as support. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our second one, approving the 2019 Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement and Addendum.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Support? Move as support, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
And our third one is authorizing the submission of a Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant Application for the development and construction of the Saginaw River Front Trail, Iron Bell Trail, through Wick's Park, for the Engineering Section, Rideaway Division.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Is there support? Support? It's moved as supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business? Yes, Councilmember Scherzer.
So I just want to clarify what the mayor had indicated. Actually, as of 3:00 PM today, the governor has signed that all bars, restaurants, and establishments, including gyms, will be closed. So the YMCA is closing at 3:00 PM, as well as the restaurants in our community. So they are still able to provide takeout. So I encourage everyone, please, please keep in mind of our small businesses and patron them as much as you can, if you don't feel like cooking, because they will provide you with takeout. And then I just want to say thank you to our districts and our communities for what they have done to step up to provide food for our students, breakfast and lunches. So if you need information, I'm sure the city website, we can get it up on there, but also on social media, it is everywhere. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to all of the community businesses and partnerships that Jimmy Green has started for getting the McDonald's gift cards. I think there's over 2,000 gift cards that have been donated for families. That, yes, there will be food, breakfast and lunch provided, and grab-and-goes for the students, but that doesn't mean that they'll necessarily stay fed, and they still may go hungry. So thank you to all of our businesses that have stepped up and done that for our community.
Yes, anybody else? Councilmember Ostas.
It's out of curiosity, I was wondering if anybody know about the people that's refurnished in the Lee Mansion? If they can get a sign out there saying how much in-kind labor, how much money they done put into that house, yeah, I really would like to see that, you know?
Okay.
I know a lot of people have been working there. I went by there one time, a guy was working there. They're doing a great job.
Yeah, I know they've been having, I've been watching their Facebook page, and I know Alex has been having various cleanups and a lot of volunteerism. He might be able to provide some of that. And also, maybe I could ask him to come here and maybe just give us kind of, maybe a little update, maybe we can put him on the manager's agenda, so I will talk to him about that. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, Mayor Protem.
I forgot to announce, we are canceling the ice cream, no, postponing the ice cream social due to the numbers that I want, it's 300, and we can't have but 50 in the room, so we're canceling the ice cream social for now, but it will be rescheduled. And for my fellow council people, persons, I'm sorry, actually, Vicky sent out an email to you letting you know that there was gonna be a special call about the coronavirus from 4:00 to 5:00 today, and everybody had an opportunity. If you did not sign up, please contact me, because as normal, I'm gonna send it to, I'm gonna make sure that our city manager has a copy of whatever we talk about on this call. So at 4:00 PM, if you are signed up, make sure that you're on that conference call or the Zoom. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Ostas.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem for all the funds that she done got from the Michigan Municipal League for the 2020 count, and for the ice cream social. And I want to thank her for the future funds that she probably be getting here during this summer, the other one with some other projects. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ostas.
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor. Councilwoman Scherzer spoke about the animal shelter and this petition that is out online. If you haven't seen it, it's going around on Facebook. If you can't find it, go to my Facebook page, @CouncilmanBillOstas, and you can take it there and raise your voice and sign the petition.
I do, I'm gonna follow up a little bit on that. The petition does have a couple minor errors. However, the substance of it is to join in the petition to ask the county commissioners to choose a city site, and that is what is important about that petition. So yes, if you would participate in the petition, please do so, even though there are some minor errors in the factual statements, the substance is what is important here. Councilmember Ostas.
And also, thank you to our city staff, manager, who have been working on this very hard since the last meeting. Councilwoman Forbes made the motion, so thank you.
Yes. I do have one, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Millen.
While we're on that subject, I just wanted to mention, we have been CC'd on a letter that some community leaders have sent to all the county commissioners, supporting a city location for that animal shelter. And from what I can tell, all the communication to the commissioners has been in support of a city location.
That's right. And I think we should thank those four individuals who wrote and signed that letter to the county commissioners. That was a significant, some very important points they made in that letter about development in the city, and support for the animal shelter in the city. So I would personally, and I hope all of us, would thank them right now for that. Okay. Last, following up again on Councilmember Scherzer's comments, buy local in general. If you are, if you are looking to purchase things while this, as I said, unprecedented